Just to reply of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maclure.
Here.
Packard.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Prove agenda. Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
With the addition.
Oh, sorry. With the addition, I added patrol car bid table from last meeting.
Yeah. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Approve minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Need to adjourn the meeting and reconvene to be organized for the year.
This is where it gets boring, folks.
Call the meeting to order and take nominations for chairman.
I'll nominate Travis.
Second. Move to motion. Lots of words there.
Yeah.
Once a year.
So we've got a motion for nominations to cease. So a second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Oh, call for nominations for vice chair.
Nominate Phyllis Packard. I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Uh, let's see. Motion to adopt Robert's rules of order.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor or roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion, motion approved. Uh, approve appointments.
Move to approve the first three highway superintendent, emergency management director, and welfare director. Reappoint Rod Polly for a two-year term. Lane Stewart for a one-year term and Drew Gunderson for a four-year term.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Fair board.
Move to appoint Travis to the fair board.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Executive Board of CCOG.
Move to appoint Betty to CCOG.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Um, let's see. Board of Directors of the Clay County Youth Trust Fund and Youth Service Council.
Move to appoint Phyllis Packard.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Planning and Zoning Commission.
Move to appoint Travis Maclure.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Public Safety Board.
Move to reappoint Dave Teese.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Vermillion Basin Advisory Board.
Move to appoint. Highway Superintendent.
Oh, second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Southeast Regional Detention Authority Steering Committee.
Move to appoint Dick Hammond.
And second on that.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Joint Landfill Advisory Board.
Nominate Phyllis Packard.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. VCDC ex-official member.
None. Oh.
Nominate Mike Manning.
No, second that.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes.
We're half done now, folks.
Vermillion Now Advisory Council.
I nominate Mike Manning.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Clay County Park Board.
Nominate Betty Smith.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. The ICAP Board. By default, it's the chair and the vice chair.
Yeah, so moved.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion approved. Let's see, the next two, we will wait till the end of, end of session. Uh, motion to designate official newspaper. We have the Plain Talk and the Tri-County News.
So moved.
Second.
For joint jurisdiction, can we just have the broadcaster?
It's not an official paper.
Or the Plain Talk. The Plain Talk as an official newspaper and then for county jurisdiction. The Plain Talk and Tri-County.
I don't know if we can do that.
Have we resolved our issues with Tri-County? Because that, for as long as I've been here, has been a ongoing problem. Now, the last time I checked, which was not recently, it is still listed at the Secretary of State as a legal publication, and then I think we need to include them, but.
Yeah, because it includes the county. We have to have up to three.
Do we continue to have issues with publication with them? They've been very responsive in the last year, so I haven't had any issues. I don't know about other department.
If there's three legal ones, we have to list all three, so. So I had a motion in a second. Correct?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Foreclosure sale locations. Uh, front door of the courthouse and front door of Wakanda Post Office at the sheriff's discretion regarding location.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Motion to designate banks as active depositories. Core Trust, First Dakota National, First Bank and Trust, Wells Fargo, Vermillion, Bank of the West, First Premier Bank, Wakanda, Billion Federal Credit Union, and South Dakota FIT.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Motion on county burials, nineteen hundred dollars.
Can be posted on that the next meeting.
I think so. Get a motion to table that till the next meeting.
Motion to table. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Adopt the state board of finance mileage rates. Max of forty-two cents per mile. In-state meals, six, fourteen, and twenty. Out-of-state meals, ten, eighteen, and twenty-eight.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Board allowance per diem, per meeting, twenty-five dollars plus mileage.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in a second. For any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Building permit fee set at fifty dollars.
Is that what we, didn't we raise that last year?
Yeah.
We, uh, the nine-one-one signs were raised last year at seventy-five.
To seventy-five?
Yeah, and then two years ago, we raised it for the building permit fees for twenty-five.
Okay. Now, I was thinking seventy-five also. So the nine-one-one fee is seventy-five.
Yep.
Okay. So moved.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Nine-one-one sign fee should be seventy-five.
Should be seventy-five. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Sheriff jail fee rates. We've got out-of-county boarding rate, seventy dollars or per contract rate, Clay County sentenced inmates fifteen dollars a day. Clay County sentenced inmates with work release, twenty dollars a day. Adult electronic GPS monitoring at twenty dollars a day, juvenile electronic GPS monitoring is ten. Applicant fingerprinting, fifteen dollars per two cards, mug shots, eight dollars, UA tests at ten. Accident reports, two dollars a page. Other reports or for printing emailed, civil process to serve.
Are all those high enough, Andy?
Yes, I'm not recommending any changes to that.
Okay, so moved. I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Motion to hold commissioner meetings first, second, and last Tuesday of the month.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
You know, I would, I would like us to at least consider holding meetings in the evening. You know, and I, I think for two reasons. One is that citizens don't have to take a day off from work in order to attend a commission meeting. But the second is that, you know, it makes it very, very difficult for anybody to, you know, decide to become a commissioner until, until they're retired. So we're kind of missing an age group here that I, you know, I think we might be able to attract in the future. You know, if, if meetings were held in, in the evening. So, uh, you know, I suppose the technical thing I have to do is propose an amendment to the motion to make them on Tuesday evenings.
So we have a motion in a second currently on the floor.
Right, so this would be an, uh, offering an amendment to the motion.
But we could have a separate motion on that.
Well, we can, we can entertain her motion if we get a second on it.
Okay, second then.
So I have a motion in a second to amend when the, the meetings will be held at night. Certain time.
Uh, seven o'clock.
Any further discussion?
Uh, in, I know we've tried one, one year, if not two years, to do this in the past during my twelve years, of which we had no difference in applications and no difference in attendance. So I really do not support it. When we have an issue that people are interested in, they are here. Those that want to serve find a way to do it. I I know it's my last year, and I'd like to hear from the other commissioners, but I know when we've tried this to give openings to the public in the past, it had absolutely no response or effect.
I guess I would agree with Phyllis.
I agree. I remember when we tried to do the night meetings, Phyllis.
And all it was, kept us up a lot later.
Well, I guess the point is, you know, if you start at seven o'clock or even six o'clock and you're running a four or five hour meeting, you're gonna be here till ten, eleven o'clock at night. I guess I'd be better off putting it in the morning. That's my thoughts.
Any further discussion?
Started by the contractor, five-thirty, please.
Any further discussion?
Oh, the other, the other part is for our employees. We, we end up with, uh, our, when we have employees come to the meetings, that, that ends up being an issue for them. They either have to flex, flex out time or we pay them overtime for that. That's, that's my first thought in moving to the evenings. Hey, you know, I agree with Betty that, uh, for, to make it easier to participate, it's, it, it can be a good move. But, uh, if the previous experience is any, any indicator that, that it hasn't made any difference in the past, but I'm sure willing to give it a try myself.
Well, the other thing we've done is those hot button topics we have had at night. But it's a single issue, so it, it limits the meeting. You know, it's not a whole. It's not a whole meeting, so we are open to doing that also as the time arises.
And I do believe we, we should do more of that. You know, this, this one could have been held at a five-thirty. If we thought about it.
There's, there's a lot to be said for regularity though, too. Not having, uh, having things that are only for special occasions have, have evening meetings. It's probably better to have regularity if we can, to the best extent that we can.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think my biggest concern, um, you know, I, I think people can participate via Zoom, but my biggest concern is who is actually able to be on the commission. So by having it in the morning, we automatically leave out people who have full-time jobs. You know, people who are caring for kids at home. And, and so, you know, we, we wind up having one, one kind of, or two kinds of commissioners in this. But most of us are retired, and I, I could not have done this while I was working full-time. It would have been completely impossible. And so, um, you know, I, 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 I think just to have a small D, more democratic commission represents, a more representative commission that, um, you know, represents the whole town and not just, you know, retirees would be, would be good, especially since those are the people. They, they are the people who are, who are gonna, gonna have to live in the future county that every time we meet, we're, we're building.
Last election, though, we had one person that actually was a full-time job, ran for office, so. You can still get to that.
And one.
Yeah.
And one. I have a full-time job.
Right, well, actually.
I'm, I'm not retired, and my kids are still at home, so it's all depends on what you make a priority.
Yeah, yeah.
I've been, I've been retired all of one day now. And it feels good. It was a good day.
You look younger.
It was a good day yesterday. So far, it's a good day today. But, yeah, I was, uh, you know, it's by the, my employer was, I normally, for the last five years, I worked just mornings except commission days, and my employer was very good to allow that to happen. So that's my own input or personal experience on that.
So what are we actually going to be putting on?
We have a motion in a second to hold meetings at, at night on Tuesdays.
Right.
Further discussion?
So.
I'll allow it.
Well, I, what, when people have tried things in the past and they didn't work.
Microphone.
I just, I just want to recommend that when things haven't worked in the past, I think you have to look at all the variables. You know, why didn't people come to those meetings? Were they advertised? I have a hard time finding out what's going on in this town. I've been here a year now, and I have to scramble. I, I, I was thankful for the full-page ad as a broadcaster. I wouldn't have known about the last week. So, um, I just look at all the variables. How well was it advertised? What were the issues? What was the time of year? What was going on in the community? There may have been other reasons why people didn't attend at night. And so, uh, to just automatically dismiss it because it didn't work in the past, I think that's a practice that we should avoid. Take a look at a new, uh, a new plan and, and pay attention to some of the variables that perhaps were overlooked. I know there are a lot of people who aren't here today who would be, but they don't have.
Big up, can't do you.
Who are not here today who would be, but they don't have employers who are able to get, you know, allow that. So I think that we really do miss a large number. I totally understand the notion of the complexities of flex time when you have employees needing, okay, they get, you know, Tuesday morning off because they're gonna be there Tuesday evening. I worked that way for many years, and, and it's doable. But I, I'm hoping that, you know, regardless of how it's decided here, if we decide to keep them during the day, we really seriously consider a way to look into having them be at eight minutes, maybe five-thirty, you know.
I could not hear the last suggestion.
That we look into a way to have them at night.
You know what? The button was down. So sorry about that, Phyllis. What I was saying is there are people who, there are people who aren't here today who would be, but they don't have employers who are able to allow that. And I hope that we, and I understand I'm sympathetic to flex time complexities. I worked that way for many years where I would take a morning off because I was gonna be working in the evening. But, um, if regardless of how we decide this, you know, provided, I'm assuming we're gonna decide that we're gonna keep them during the day. I hope it's not completely off the table for us to seriously reconsider in some way that we could be flexible and have them maybe at five-thirty. That would still, I doubt, I mean, yes, you do have four-hour meetings occasionally, but most of the meetings are not four hours. And so I would hope we would think about that. I think Betty's right. It would bring in a larger number of people who could be eligible. I didn't know they had moved to the evening when they did. So those two years when they were in the evening, I wasn't aware that they were. So I'm, I'm with Connie that, um, it's kind of hard to get information sometimes unless you really are, are keeping your eye on it.
Any further discussion?
This is Alexis. I'm gonna speak from a personal standpoint, um, and just offer, I don't know that there's a great answer to this because I would agree it's very convenient when I wanna go to a school board meeting or a city council meeting to go in the evening. However, I will also tell you that having kids, especially kids who are actively involved in activities, that's gonna be a double-edged sword. Like, if this were going on tonight, I'd be at the basketball game watching my senior start. And so, um, you know, that's, when it comes to priorities, those are things too that I think are difficult. That so many things occur in the evening that are vying for people's, um, attention. So I don't know that there's a right answer to this. Maybe a mix of things to consider for the future, but, um, but there's a lot of things that are gonna buy for people's attention in the evenings, too.
Any further discussion? So the motion is to, a yes vote will be to hold the meetings at night, a no vote will be against it on the amendment. So if there's no further discussion, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
No.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
No.
Maclure.
No. Motion fails. Now we have a motion in a second. The meetings on the first, second and last Tuesday of the month.
So moved. Okay.
So there's no further discussion on that. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes. Motion passes. Motion to, since we have the contract to sign, Carrie, do we want to approve them right now or do we want to wait until we get to the contract? Because don't we have the SDPAA contract at the bottom also?
We do. Yeah, you can.
Or is it just a formality? I mean, it's who we're with, right?
It's a formality, but I mean, if you want to wait, that's fine. It doesn't matter.
No, that's fine. I didn't know if there was any, going to be any discussion on it. So a motion to approve the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance for Counties Liability and SDML Workers' Compensation Insurance.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll just note that at the last regional, the district commissioners meeting, there's a proposal under discussion for the future, won't affect this vote that, you know, we, we may be able to pool, create a risk pool with the state at some point. But you know, again, they're, they're just asking for feedback right now. They haven't, they haven't made any, any decisions.
That was for health insurance, just to clarify.
Yep.
That doesn't apply to this particular motion.
Okay.
Let's see. So I have a motion and a second on this?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes, motion passes. Motion for intent to cover election workers and sheriff's reserve deputies and election poll rework, election poll workers on workers' compensation insurance. The sheriff maintains a list for reserve deputies. The auditor maintains a list for poll workers.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
Hammond. Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes, motion passes. Did somebody give you the answers ahead of time, Dick?
This is not jeopardy, is that what you're saying?
Use of Sourcewell as a potential vendor source for the county.
So moved.
Oh, not a second.
That's a second, she said?
I said not a second.
Oh, not a second. Okay.
I'll second. Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a second.
Yes.
Question, comment?
Tell us again about the Sourcewell, exactly what we're, we're getting here. I think Carrie knows something about this.
We've used them in the past. As I understand it, they go out and bid things and then we're able to buy off of those bids for other, bids for other government agencies. So it's kind of like a pool, but we can draw from other agencies bids by using Sourcewell to do that.
And this is how we say, I think, bought a greater honor.
Yep.
Charles McCalley.
Pretty much everything, well, even state bid.
Yes.
Pretty much everything Rod buys is through Sourcewell.
Yep. It saves a lot of hassle and money.
Yeah.
We buy all the culverts and all that stuff through Bead, correctly, which is true.
So any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes, motion passes. Anything else that we forgot or needs to be addressed?
I can't think of anything.
Nope. Resolution 2022 dash zero one for election precincts, polling places and 2022 dash zero two for election official fees.
Move approval. Second.
Second on both.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes, motion passes. We did that pretty good. At 9:32, now is the time and place for the second reading of ordinance 2021 dash zero six, a request for zoning change for land located at the south end of 460th Avenue from NRCS Natural Resource Conservation to rural residential for a subdivision. Like the last meeting, I'll give the applicant 15 minutes. Everybody else, there's five minutes per comments and then another 10 minutes at the end for rebuttal. So Sarah, if you'd like to start.
Good morning. Good morning. I am Sarah Taggart. I am here and I am here on behalf of Mary Leary Heine, the widow and trustee of Daniel Heine, in whose trust this property is held. I am here to seek fulfillment of my uncle's intentions, as confirmed in his trust, to develop his riverfront property, which he owned, worked, cared for, and paid taxes on for over 50 years. Because of our desire to be transparent and fully compliant with zoning ordinance, or ordinances, we have asked for the aid and legal expertise of attorney Tom Reynolds, with whom I will be sharing my allotted time for comments. You have in front of you a rezon request that fully complies with the ordinance put in place by this governing body. Your ordinance planned for and makes specific provisions for residential lots along the Missouri River. The ordinance expected rezoning from NRC to rural residential, rural residential, which is why we chose to apply for this specific zoning designation. This rezon request has been recommended for approval by your zoning administrator, approved by your planning and zoning commission, and there is no precedent for the denial of residential river lots along the Missouri. Last week's hearing on this rezon request cleared up a lot, cleared up some confusion. I appreciate the work the commissioners did ahead of time to understand this project. To be clear, what I heard from the commissioners was agreement that certainly, under current zoning, residential lots are allowed on this property. The exact number is the only thing in question. So it is abundantly clear that this property will not remain as it is. We submitted the application requesting a rezon to rural residential because everything we are asking complied with this ordinance. It seems to me that ordinances are available to be used and it makes sense to choose the most straightforward path. It also makes sense to have it all rezoned together in order that the entirety of the property meets the same development standards, standards in perpetuity and the protection of the tree line will continue uninterrupted. To address some concerns brought up last week, first, this development will have no environmental effect on the river or Clay County Park. Other developments along the river have not shown to, including the development that is Clay County Park, and neither will this one. On bank stabilization, the bank already has stabilization. As far as the road, with the level and type of traffic currently seen on 460th, it would be difficult to believe that this would even register in terms of where. Campground traffic alone involves giant, giant trucks pulling campers and fifth wheels and motorhomes coming and going continually, along with all the pickups pulling boats to use the landing. Everything is in place and ready to go for this development. We have a wheeling easement provider. I have been in frequent contact with Clay Rural Water and they are fully capable of handling the need, the water needs of this development. Clay Union Electric is ready and able to supply electricity and the installation of all utilities, along with the road, will be privately funded. We are asking for no contribution from the county. The only thing we ask is to exercise our right to utilize a zoning designation established by this commission on a fully compliant application. We want to achieve the highest and best use for this land, fulfill the owner's intention of the land, meet the enormous need for residential building sites, and provide a great deal of benefit to the county. It's difficult for me to imagine anything other than a firm vote to approve this application. But if there's any doubt, I'd like to ask you this. What is different about this proposal from all other residential river lot applications that have all been approved in the past? Is it the number? There's no mention in the ordinance of a limit on number of allowable lots. Precedent is for the approval of this. If denied, the new precedent precedent is that the commission will ignore their own ordinance, ordinances on a whim. That compliant applications can be denied without reason and it greatly marginalizes the hard work and expertise of the planning and zoning commission. To deny this application would send a clear message that owners can have property rights stripped away in favor of those who have no ownership or material interest. A lot of thought has been putting, put into designing a beautiful development that is unique, shows sensitivity to the desires of us all to see this area retain its natural beauty, beauty and fulfills a need in the most practical and aesthetic way possible. The reason for the 18 lots is that it spans perfectly across the entire length of the tree line, which will preserve this tree line and eliminate the possibility of its destruction in pursuit of other uses. The two-acre lot size was also chosen because it is the size consistent with what my uncle directed in his trust and which he had chosen because of practicality, aesthetics, and with the knowledge that this had always been approved in the past. This development will be a gem in our community that I believe in the near future, this commission will count amongst one of its finest achievements. This is unlike any other river development with the curve of the road, the lots with the sublots, the covenants to ensure the natural beauty is maintained to the highest degree possible. The approval of this reasonable and compliant rezon request as written is the cleanest and most straightforward way to proceed and will ultimately be the best way to protect and preserve this property. Your vote to approve this rezon request will show that you fully, that a fully compliant zoning application will not be arbitrarily denied. It will show your resolve to resist pressure to deny private property rights. We are respectfully asking for your approval of this application, which respects the landowners and your ordinances. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tom Reynolds. I represent Ms. Taggart. I'm here just to speak to the legal issues with this rezoning application. My client has provided the proper application, paid the proper fees, provided the proper notice to landowners in the community and has provided the proper information to the commission. It's been approved by the zoning administrator and recommended for approval. It's been approved by the planning commission on a vote of four to one. There was ample support showed for the rezoning application at the last meeting. And as my client had just discussed, there is a lot of precedent for this rezoning. It appears to us that they've all been granted in the past, as evidenced by the, the memo from your zoning administrator that 150 of these homes have been built in the last 30 years. So what would be different about, about these lots? And we think it complies with the intent of the zoning ordinance. I would also say that there are other routes to make this development happen. But this is a lot cleaner for the commission, in my opinion. So I don't think that, you know, if this is denied today, I, this isn't over. I think it's, it's going to happen one way or the other, but I think that the commission would be doing itself a favor if they approved it in this form. And so with that, there is no legal reason that the commission can, can deny the, the application for rezoning. Thank you.
Any other proponents?
Good morning. Can those on Zoom hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. My name's Dominic Remus and thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. I am a registered professional engineer and I work in the solid waste business. I direct the design, permitting, construction, environmental compliance and operation of recycling facilities and landfills. So preparing zoning applications with a particular concern about environmental compliance is at the core of the work that I do professionally. I grew up in Vermillion and our family respects and thoroughly enjoys our time on the river. We have a lot of fun with boating and kayaking and canoeing and spending time on the sandbars with our children, grandchildren, our nieces and nephews. And we enjoy watching others spend time in the river and have a lot of fun as well. It's certainly been a place of fond memories. Separate from my sentiment for enjoyment of the river, the application before you is something that's very straightforward and fully compliant with resident, rural residential zoning within the ordinance. In my work, it's very typical that zoning applications have multiple variances requested in the applications. These, the, the number of variances requested also heightens the amount of opposition or contention at the, at zoning hearings for sure. And that's mostly because the adjacent landowners who have a particular interest in what's going on next door have, have great concerns. Indeed, I'm preparing a zoning application right now for a recycling facility in which we are going to be requesting variances to, within the, to the ordinance within the application. So again, it's very, it's very typical for, for these applications have variances. In the case here, those who are materially affected by the development, the adjacent landowners are offering no opposition. And the, and the application itself is on face value compliant with the ordinance. You know, everyone here has personal property in some form of or another. And our citizenry generally regard the use of private property freely to be a right, so long as it's done in accordance with the rule of law. The Clay County ordinance was fairly recently updated and less than 10 years ago. And those who updated the ordinance did so in a very thoughtful and considerate way and provided a set of rules by which land could be developed and managed within Clay County. And so they also specifically looked at, and it's written right in the ordinance, a strong consideration of residential development on the Missouri River. So, you know, really a vote against this application would really, it would render development of land in Clay County to be an arbitrary process. A no would really marginalize the ordinance itself and make private property developers, anyone with a project that they want to do, put at the whim of the county commissioners' temporal desires. A vote yes for the application, something that's compliant with the ordinance is written, is a perfectly reasonable thing to do. As such, I encourage you to approve this application. And I thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you this morning.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
If I may say, I did receive four phone calls of proponents that could not attend today. Put that on record.
Okay. Any other proponents? Kyle? No gum in class.
Morning, I'm Kyle Jensen. Live in county, township. First of all, I'm here because I'd like to see the betterment of our county and the things that this can bring to the table for that with the tax revenue. with the tax revenue. It's been stated and stated again that, you know, this has been legally done in front of everyone. The only reason that it would be argued against is some personal beliefs or special interest groups. I'd like to state that there is 800 acres in this county that was purchased by the government. That is no longer collecting taxes. The boat ramp is no longer collecting taxes. The campground that was all built by the government, paid for. So we are all paying for that and we are not collecting taxes on that anymore. There are 150 homes on the river. And the area which I live and do the snow removal and am on the township board, there are close to 40 residential homes to travel. Our township gravel roads. It is a issue with the township gravel road. We have not the money that the county has to maintain it. I live on Timber Road. I understand what Timber Road is. Not great. The county has done the best they can with the money available to them. I travel Clay County Park Road. That road is in very good condition. I do not believe that these 18 homes would cause any issue with that road more than regular maintenance that is always done. These 18 houses are next to a boat ramp, Clay County Park. My parents live next to High Lines, next to a public boat ramp. There are public trees right there by High Lines. There are, like I said, more than 40 residential homes in a single line from High Lines going down river. Now, once has there been any issues with any septic service or anything? And in my opinion, because I've lived here for 48 years, that is a beautiful stretch of river. The trees have not only been maintained, they've been upgraded, which is also in accordance to their plan of the curved road for the trees. I have farmed down there and been down there for more than 25 years. That was Danny's plan. That's why that road goes there. That's why those trees are there. If this is approved, as is, those trees will stay. It's a beautiful stretch of river for 18 spots. I don't believe there's an issue from the 18. The, might have touched on the road. Like I said, it's been approved by Drew, the county supervisor and the board, four to one. I don't believe that this should be denied since they've done all the work legally. The zoning was done in, talked to Drew this morning, 1999 to 2001. So there have been homes that have been approved under this current ordinance. Thank you. So as a landowner, I would like to see this go through and our rights protected because it does make it beautiful. I don't want those trees to come down. Danny didn't want those trees to come down. There is more than a quarter mile of trees beyond this down river that can be taken down. I don't want that. Nobody here wants that. So I would appreciate it if you would take all these things into consideration and vote yes. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other proponents?
My name is Tom Taggart. I'd like to talk a little bit about last week's meeting on the septic tank issues. A lot of people who not familiar with septic systems, I mean, you have to be licensed and certified with state to be able to put them in. And 50 to 60% of your, your drain, drain field, leach field evaporates. So it doesn't go into the ground. It evaporates. With that being said, the campground, Clay County Park's campground has two bathhouses with two septic tanks and they also have a dump station, which 30 plus campers every week dump thousands of gallons of waste into it and no problems there. Speaking of the campground, the road with the campers, I mean, 30 plus a week, I'm sure up and down the road. Timber Road, semis, tractors, grain trailers, the Clay County Highway Department's located there with all their equipment. Everything gets used. It's in great shape. I think this development's going to do a lot for the community in terms of when a house gets built, you're going to have concrete lumberyard, carpenters, plumbers, electricians, hardware stores, flooring stores, paint, you name it. Everybody will benefit from this. Okay, just for example, on this development, if say all 18 lots get sold with nothing built on them, taxes will be $1,000 a year per, per lot. So that's $18,000 a year for nothing being done. Put a house on it, just for example, I would say a low estimate would be $4,000 a year per house. Take that times 10 houses, that's $40,000 a year. Take that times, do that same amount of 15 houses, that's $60,000 a year. Take that by 10, 10 years, that's $600,000 that the county has to deal with, which is great. Like it's been said, it was passed through the zoning committee as private property. That's all been touched on here. I think with the taxes, I think everybody's going to benefit. The county, the city, it's going to be a beautiful development. And I think it'll be a benefit for Clay County. I don't see any reason why it shouldn't pass. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other proponents? Hearing them, opponents.
Hi, my name is Cindy Game. I live at 804 Cambie Street in Vermillion. And I'm going to read it this time. Can you all hear me? Okay, I just wrote this last night, just some thoughts. This living river, an ever-changing river that flows through Clay County and surrounding areas is part of a unique, natural 52-mile segment of the Missouri River, maintained by the National Park Service to support as much as possible it fully, its fully natural state. The fact that this six-mile portion of the river that flows by us is like no other, that it is free to move and change and is a wild, wild and woolly representation of wilderness gives our area, our residents as a whole, a truly unique experience to explore and enjoy. Most people living in the area and visiting the area go to Clay County Park to experience the vast beauty of this river, looking both to the east and to the west. This segment up for consideration has been zoned natural, natural resource conservation to maintain it as that. And we need to fully understand and comprehend the reasons it has been zoned this way in our area. It is intended to remain natural. The NRC designation does not prevent houses from being built. However, there are specific guidelines and applications that must meet qualifications in such situations, but does prevent things like subdivisions from being built, which is what the zoning change is asking for. An 18-house subdivision also potentially considered unwanted sprawl in the detailed comprehensive plan. With all that said, I would like to address a couple of things that Sarah Taggart said in the last meeting. She tried to make a very poignant suggestion that houses in this area would not be seen. Somehow 18 houses are not going to be seen. Honestly, that is one of the most ridiculous statements in relation to this issue that I've heard. If you are referring only to those in boats looking at the shore, yes, you might have to lift your head and turn some and you may or may not see the houses. But the majority of us don't experience the river from a boat. I don't own a boat. I do visit the park regularly and look forward to the drive down the road and that relaxing view before me that reveals the trees and the break in the landscape. The river, of course, while seeing the Nebraska bluffs just beyond. The natural beauty ahead is part of the experience. With just this change, I will see a subdivision very clearly before me. When I look east from the park, I will see houses. They will not be hidden. Now, houses can be lovely, but they are not wilderness. These are two different subject matters, as I expressed with my photography example at the last meeting. Lastly, Sarah also said that Clay County Park is too busy to find peace and solace. Yet, with an occasional exception, that is just what I find each and every time I go. Obviously, she is not one that goes to Clay County Park to find this unique cleansing that it provides for so many of us. If she was, if she was, she would know that what she said is just not true. I request a no vote on the zoning change that we, we, we remain as pure to the NRZ zoning designation as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
Okay, now I've done a good job. So I'm Megan Jarco. I live at 2118 Old Bridge Road. I'm trained as a plant ecologist, but I've led a bunch of programming, supervised a bunch of students who've done research on the Missouri River and learned from a bunch of people in the area that have a lot of deep knowledge about the Missouri River. And so I wanted to do a little bit of background on the Missouri River and why it's so special. So I think clearly we all agree this is an extremely special river that is like nowhere else, certainly in the United States. So it's the longest river in the United States. If it would have been named correctly, when it can, you know, we have a confluence with the Mississippi, it would have also been the largest river in the United States. It can roughly be divided into three parts. There's the free-flowing parts, there's the reservoir, and there's the channelized parts. And when you live, you know, on the reservoir parts, it looks more like a lake. When you live on the channelized part, it doesn't look like the vast river that we have around us. And so start when you get to Arapongka, you can see that we start training the river. And by training the river, they put out those wing dikes and so you're trying to get the river to become channelized. That's not the part of the river that we live around now and that, so when you hear people talk about the free-flowing part, that's the part of the free-flowing part. And so when we talk about this no longer being a floodplain, I mean, I know it's accurate that it's no longer designated as a floodplain, but of course, if you look from bluff to bluff, Vermillion was set up on the Missouri River. The Missouri River flooded and it jumped to a new bed. So we certainly, historically, all of that land, it's beautiful because it's a floodplain. It is a huge vast floodplain and we have changed the river so that it's unlikely to flood anymore. The dams have made the river downcut, which means it's unlikely to flood, but that doesn't mean that it can't still be a free-flowing river and that that shouldn't be a really high priority in our heads. So river and the water in them have energy. And so of course rivers move, as I said last time, and so they can move from side to side. They can eat down in their banks. They can flood over their banks or they can move faster. But those are some of the options that you have. And the more that we stabilize the banks, the more it limits the options that the rivers have to move. And so I know I just heard that there already is bank stabilization along this area, which I don't know whether that's actually correct or not. But I know last week, one of the people who wants to buy the land had said that she has a plan for the bank stabilization that they plan to do on their part of the river. And I think we know really well that all of the landowners will stabilize the banks. You're not going to build a beautiful house and then allow the river to move and put your house in the river. It'll be really important to stabilize those banks to protect their property. And so it's, you know, again, the potentially largest river in the United States, or it should have been, it's the longest river in the United States, will 18 things of bank stabilization, you know, ruin the river? Of course not. But there's a precedent that this is in this really important, unique area. And the more we start to allow bank stabilization, the more you change how the river can move. And of course, the more you affect the people downstream of it. And so for all of those reasons, I think it's really important. It's in the special designated zone. It's important to keep it in that zone and allow the river as much flexibility and maintaining its free-flowing nature. And I would also just like to note that we should be really cautious when we hear threats from people. And so I just heard a threat, not very veiled, from the lawyer representing the people that this will be developed either way. Remember that as your commission, it's really important to not be allowed to be threatened by people. You know, if, if this is the zone of it, you all have the choice of how it should be zoned. And it's not, you know, if it will, if they'll develop this land either way, that doesn't mean it's your obligation to change the zoning right now. If it can already be redeveloped and allow the landowners to develop it within the current zoning. And so with all of that, I encourage you to vote no on this and just allow the landowners to do the development as they plan without re, without the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
I'm Suzanne Skirm. I'm resident here in Vermillion, 722 Lewis. And I'd just like to say a few things that, that would certainly contradict what's been said by some of the proponents. Some interesting facts, and the commissioners have heard this because I wrote to them about it, but in 1937, there were 2.3 billion people on this planet. And there was a 66% of the planet that was wilderness. Jump ahead to 2020, now there's 7.8 billion of us and there's only 35% wilderness left. The UN has has estimated that there's probably a million species that are going to be going extinct in the next few decades. And the largest reason for this extinction is because of human activity, humans taking away the habitat, building on it, farming on it, whatever human activity does. Sarah said something about there will be no environmental harm from these, from the development that she is proposing. That is absolutely not true. Anytime you build something, whether it's a house, a fence, a shed, any human structure has a disrupted effect on the environment. There are natural corridors that the wildlife use to get from one place to another. Every time we build something, we disrupt those corridors. And therefore the animals leave, sometimes unfortunately go extinct. I know that in a previous meeting, people that own houses on the river have said they love the river and they take good care of their property. I don't doubt that for an instant. I'm sure, you know, we all love the river. But one of the things that they said was, well, we see wildlife all the time. Deer, opossum, raccoons, Canada geese, wild turkeys, all those things. Those are species that have actually flourished. Those are species that have actually flourished. In the. The situation that we have now where people have kind of taken over the habitat. These species have learned to coexist with with man and with our. Our structures that we've built. How often do you see like a bobcat, a fox? Leestern piping plover. These are all things that don't do so well with us building in their habitat. And I, for one, would like to see more of that and less of the housing. So if we love the river and. And we want it to be natural. We should make this whole area a preserve, not build houses on it. I know that that's not going to happen, but at least we can minimize the number of houses being built on it. Thank you.
Thanks. Other opponents?
And we are up. All right. Sharon Gray and live here in Vermillion. And first, I want to say again, like I did last time, that it is very clear to me. All of us love the river. That I totally. Know that I can feel that. I know that, you know, even wanting to build houses there is because you love the river. So I I am with you there. I do need to take issue with the notion of variances only coming from people who own adjacent property, and I would say all of us. Own the adjacent property. Because the Clay County Park is our park, and so that's why we're here, because we feel. As fellow citizens and owners of that space and enjoyers of that space that we need to be. Be heard. I. Want to also say I. So thank you, Phyllis, for mentioning that for proponents were able to call in. I would like to say that at least my son Jeffrey, who spoke very eloquently last time, couldn't be here because. He took two hours off last time and he cannot take any more time off from his credit union job. He would be here to echo some of the things. And so I'd like to try to, best I can. Echo and reiterate what he said, which was the comprehensive plan. Does specifically note the need to preserve the natural resources conservation river. That is is clearly in that our comprehensive plan. And. The urban sprawl, trying to avoid that. Again, I'm not doing nearly as good a job as he did with his presentation, but I hope you can recollect and remember what he said. The one thing that I think is a real win win here that is going to possibly give the commissioners an out is that. Keeping it natural resources conservation does not preclude, does not prevent people from being able to build homes on that space. It simply means they will need to do so in accordance with the natural resources conservation zoning requirements. Those hundred and fifty houses that are already here were clearly able to build with that in mind. And. So when we're saying it'll make it cleaner. Cleaner to build a subdivision would be, you know, rezoning it to rural residential would make it easier to build eighteen houses. But it is certainly quite possible. And and obviously, you know, very possible because there are a hundred and fifty of them to build homes. Within the natural resources conservation district. So I would implore us to keep it that zoning. Knowing that people can in fact petition then with a conditional use permit, I'm understanding. Is that correct? To have a home built in that space. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Other opponents?
Hi, my name is Judy Sharples, and I've lived in Wakanda since nineteen seventy one. And all the way from Sioux City to New Orleans, the Missouri River has been channelized. And it's little more than a ditch. And above Yankton, Missouri River has been contained in a series of inland dams. So this is it. This is the last remaining free flowing stretch of the Missouri River. As such, it is very precious. Every mile is precious. And it's irreplaceable. And I'm asking you to do your duty to preserve and protect this. Precious resource that we have. Please vote no today. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
My name is Paul Hassy. I live in Vermillion, and I have. Two and a half acres along the river in Norway Township. At the last meeting, I was waiting for a call of for comments. Not necessarily for or against. But after thinking about this for a week, I've got the following comment. There's a public notice in the plane talk. These December seventeenth calling for a public hearing. Now, I thought the county commissioners would authorize that. I couldn't find in a minute where you guys authorized that public hearing. The zoning administrator authorized that hearing. So the question is, who in the county can call for a public hearing? In your state's attorney could.
So when there's a, when there's an application provided. It's in our zoning that it goes to a public hearing, if that's what it calls for.
But the question is, who can call for a public hearing?
Microphone?
It's required that it goes to a public hearing, to due process consideration, and in my assessment of things. And review, all statutory and county ordinance requirements have been complied with, so.
Can the highway superintendent call for a public hearing?
I mean, so the county has established a zoning ordinance, the. Has vested authority with the planning commission, has appointed a zoning administrator, and he carries out the functions appropriately so. For the county in that regard. So. I mean, I think we're splitting hairs over something that's irrelevant.
You've got a zoning hearing today and you don't have a map out here, zoning map. In case everyone wants to see one, I brought one. So. The county has eight different zoning districts. Each district has its special requirements and uses. So did I see a copy of the uses that are permitted in the RR district? The question is, what's permitted in the RR district? You have a list of.
Not in front of me. I don't.
Is there somebody that's got one?
Good. Here it is. Single family detached dwellings, churches, neighborhood utilities, electrical substation. Fences, minor home occupation. And then they got under conditional use. They got bed and breakfasts, cemeteries, daycare centers, golf course, group homes. Major home occupations, private outdoor recreation areas, public parks and recreation. Facilities, public service facility, utility to service the schools. That's pretty much it.
Thanks.
And home.
Residences, they have to be on a dedicated street. State law requires. Houses to be on a dedicated street, no more of these easement access. Guess everybody knows that. Back in about seventy nine, I was involved with plating a thousand feet of frontage along the Missouri. And at that time, the requirements in the floodplain was two hundred and fifty feet of frontage and two acre minimum. I could have squeezed out another lot. But with a variance. But I chose not to, so the lots are two hundred and fifty feet wide. And then to the west of me. The owners applied for variances and they got their lots down to two hundred and five feet wide. And I call that developers greed when you squeeze out more lots than required than most of us can have.
You've got about one minute left.
Well, thanks. Okay. Have you people read the comprehensive plan for the county? Talks about. discourage leapfrog development. And it required that new development with existing adjacent development. The property in question can be developed under the current regulations. You don't need a zoning change. The recent subdivision out by the High Line called a Riken subdivision was done that way. So. That's body. Okay.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you. Other opponents?
Hello, my name is Douglas Sharple Schmidt, and I am a life scout with Troop 711. I have come here today to oppose this project, and I have several reasons. Why I think you should not build here. First of all, you will lose this natural area. It can result in the destruction of habitats of species of birds and different animals. We may lose these animals from even like birds have migratory routes and we may lose. Their stop at Vermillion. We may lose the, sorry, we may lose. This as a stop in their migratory route. It is also possible that we may lose other species of animals as well. There is. The this building development won't destroy the entire stretch of the river that is still natural. But this area that it is built in will not be the same. In the future, for future generations, when I'm older, it may be a housing development as suggested, or it may be some dilapidated buildings. Nature restoration is a thing, but it is, it will likely not be the same. Even if someone does try to restore this area in the future. There's also a danger of increasing flood risk. According to an article by Leslie Dorworth and Robert McCormick. Residential developments and other building projects on the banks of a river can increase the risk of flood. Because the natural soil in the environment absorbs water and sucks it down into the. At into the deeper parts of the soil. But impervious surfaces such as roofs of house, houses or concrete or roads will not absorb. Rainfall so easily and will cause it to to go straight into the Missouri River. And it could also carry other pollutants with it, such as manmade waste. And so I ask you to vote no today. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
Honey Kruger, I live at 714 Lewis. Well, when I listened to the opening remarks from the staggered and the lawyer and the civil engineer, I just thought. I mean, they did an amazing job. They're very polished. They hit all the points, and I just sat there and thought, well, and and kind of dismissed us as special interests. I thought, well, I don't know if that's true, but I could I could see their point. And I sat there and tried to figure out, okay, how how? What do we say? But one of the things that I picked up on was one of the the bases of their their logic is. Drew Gunderson approved this. Most of the commissioners are for this. Why are we even having this conversation? Well, that is why we're having this conversation. These meetings are to allow those of us, I I don't know that my team can afford a lawyer. I don't even really have a team. We're just individuals. But man, that that would be handy to have a lawyer. But what we do have is we have this group of county commissioners whose your duty is to help people like us. Protect our our rights to public property, protect our our rights to zoning that is already in place. I was a little taken aback by a couple of the threats, the statement, and I think I heard this last time, too. I don't want the the trees to be pulled down. Well, is there? A plan to pull down trees, or is that just kind of put in there to kind of scare us? And to make the commissioners think, well, yeah, we got to save the trees. I think if we keep the zoning in place. Other trees will will be saved. The. The argument about property rights wasn't as hit as hard this time because I think people heard. Especially Jeffrey Graylobe, who spoke last week. About we're not talking about hurting anybody's current property rights. People can build right now. We're talking about the commissioner's debt, the commissioner standing firm and saying. We do not feel it is in the best interest to grant additional property rights. That the that the people who are part of our our public taxpayers who own Clay County Park. That somebody has to stand for us. Somebody has to help us. And that, I think, is what the county commissioners, what why why you exist is is to kind of balance these things. There's nothing prohibiting the building now. What we don't want is additional property rights. What we don't want is even more encroachment on on the the wild river. So, yes, you represent us. You represent those of us on the sidelines who are. In our unpolished ways, trying to make these arguments, and I hope that you can listen to us. I hope that you can listen to the young scout who spoke eloquently. And please consider keeping. The status quo in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
My name is Bruce Gray. I live at 804 Candy Street. First thing I was I was hearing proponents make the argument that houses have been along there, and I would ask, do we just want to line the Missouri? River and Clay County with houses? And I think the answer is no. Sarah had made mentioned that. The ordinance doesn't make any restriction on number of lots. That's the rural residential ordinance. This is. NRC, Natural Resource Conservation, and I take issue with Administrator Gunderson's. Line in the comments of the application bringing this meeting up. That one residence or even eighteen potential new residents says nothing new or unprecedented along the Missouri River or in the NRC district. That seems wrong. So. Third thing is they're making comments about not that much use on the road. I would argue that cement trucks and construction equipment for eighteen homes will create a big, maybe short term impact. That's gonna have, somebody's gonna have to pick up the tab to fix that road after eighteen houses gets filled with all that heavy equipment. So I'll just, I'm gonna finish saying that. Well, Clay County Park, which borders the Missouri National Recreational River, while not absolutely pristine. It yields a panorama with very little manmade structures in the vista. But eighteen residences along the river right below the boat landing would be a huge erosion of that vast natural view. That natural view once lost will never get back. Once this area is rezoned. It will be, it will permanently lose the protections the current NRC zoning intends. And I would just say, when I drive down, they they made. Comments that there's a lot of manmade stuff. When I go down there and I take in the view, I'm there with my car. And it's for that moment, less natural. But when I'm done, I drive and take my car away. I can't drive and take eighteen houses away. This is a, this is for the public, the place, this is our crown jewel doorstep to. This is a, this is for the public, the place, this is our crown jewel doorstep to Missouri National Recreational River. I please urge you to not change the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Other performance, opponents?
Hi, my name is Julia Kleinschmidt and I'm a really new resident of Vermillion in Clay County. We moved here. I married my husband Jerry Bartles, who's a Meckling boy in 2014 and we moved here planning to spend the rest of our lives at 109 Linden in part because of the beautiful river and because of Clay County Park. And in fact, that's where we were engaged and that's where I committed to be part of this. And I'll tell you what, I'm from Bo Valley, Nebraska, and it's really hard for me to jump the river because it's just as beautiful over there, although I know you people don't believe this. One of the things I hear, I'm a social worker by trade and I work in policy. And one of the things I'm hearing is an artificial argument presented by the proponents for this project that the county will be in trouble if y'all don't follow what the zoning commissioners had to say, that this has been done before. And so you're just setting yourself up for an issue. But then I also hear the opponents talk about how there was a lot of thoughtful work put into your comprehensive plan over, I'm guessing, a long period of time with lots of input by your citizens. And I'm thinking about what Commissioner Smith said about how you all are responsible for crafting decisions that will in part determine the future of this county and of this community. And so it feels to me that given what I've learned so far about this, that you have a choice between abiding and affirming, abiding by and affirming your comprehensive plan and going back to your zoning council and saying, maybe we need some reeducation about our comprehensive plan and what we're trying to do here. And that would impact future decisions rather than, oh, I don't know, rather than be worried that your processes, by stopping your process now, you're going to be inconsistent. I think I'd be more worried about being inconsistent with your vision for the future. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other opponents?
Hi, I'm Dave Struckman Johnson. Live at 4604 Timber Road, which is immediately across the road from the proposed subdivision. I've lived in Clay County since 1970. First 10 years were in Vermillion, the remaining were my Timber Road address. Apologize in advance if this is a little disconnected. I've got a number of points I'd like to make, which aren't necessarily following one another. So I'll just get at it. So I don't use up my time. I would like to reiterate that I don't think when we talk about the subdivision application or the changes on the application being absolutely compliant with all the rules and regulations of the county is in and of itself sufficient. We wouldn't be having this meeting if all you had to do was meet the requirements for the application, right? You guys are applying judgment to what they say. That's the idea behind this. Otherwise, there wouldn't be need for communication. The zoning administrator could do it all by himself by following the set and dry rules that were there. There's been a number of mentions about property rights and allowing people to do what they want with their land. I certainly don't really object to that in general, but we also need to consider the public rights. There's all kinds of rules about things like, like you're right to throw a punch stops at my nose. You're right, the free speech stops when you yell fire in a, in a crowded room. I think we need to balance things. You can't build a, a house on the rim of the Grand Canyon, right? That's against the rules because it's for the public good that that beautiful canyon is there. It's been said, this is no different than any other development along the river. Well, I don't think there's any other development along the river that has Clay County Park next door to it, where there's a road that accesses the subdivision as well as Clay County Park. There's been a lot of talk about taxes and the need for houses. Well, if there's a desperate need for houses in Clay County, there's not necessarily a desperate need for houses to be built in that particular spot. If a $2,000 or $20,000, $200,000 house is built on the river, are the taxes different than if a $200,000 house is built somewhere else in the county? If, if there's a need for housing, it will be built somewhere and the taxes will be there regardless of where it's built. Adding to tax bill, well, independent of that, we talked about, well, there's, there's less tax on agricultural land in this. What about schools, churches, University of South Dakota? They don't pay taxes at the county either. Does that mean we should get rid of all our churches and schools or remove the tax exempt status? I don't think so. It's been said that we're not going to change the nature of the river by stabilizing the banks. Well, I would encourage any of you to take a look at a Google map and the overhead view and you look at the mile or so to the west of Clay County Park. It's white along the bank. Looks like a big, long row of white rock. You look at the area to the right of Clay County Park to the east, looks like a riverbank. It's not the same and people that float down the river are going to see something very different when they look at a stabilized bank than what's there now, even if it already is partially stabilized at this point. I think this is a question for the county commission and I won't ask you to, to address it at this point, but there's been a fair amount of confusion, I think, about how many houses can be built, given what set of circumstances. Apparently we can get 18, maybe if the zoning changes, how many can be built if the zoning doesn't change, if it stays as NRC? I think there was some disagreement among the commission about that last time. I think maybe that's something that should be resolved before a final vote on this is taken. I would like to second what other people have said about the solitude of Clay County Park. It's been said that, well, it's a really busy place and having a subdivision with 18 cars driving back, cars making houses driving back and forth. And the, the access road to Clay County Park is not going to be a problem. I went out Sunday just to see and there was nobody there except me. And I had the opportunity to park in Clay County Park and view the river flowing by, sandbars out there with nobody just bothering me from any direction. I think that that's not an uncommon situation, at least to people that visit often. This as a a point of, of information, I too felt threatened by the presentation by the lawyer, whatever that's worth. And finally, we've heard a lot about all these covenants are going to have, you know, we're going to have bigger setbacks. We'll make sure the road does this. We'll make sure the septic tanks do that. How is that guaranteed? Does, when we change the zoning, when you change the zoning, does that include all these covenants? Or once the zoning is changed, they can do what they want, even though they said there would be a covenant on the property. Not familiar enough with the law about how that works, but that's something I thought we should be informed about. And finally, I guess perhaps one way to summarize a lot of the things that have been said is that we don't necessarily have to repeat mistakes that have been made in the past. If there's a lot of places that river doesn't look so beautiful because there are things there, well, it doesn't just mean we can make more things that make the river less beautiful, just because there's something's already been done. Thank you.
Thanks. Other opponents? You've already spoke. Sorry. Is there any other opponents?
Can I just address Mr. Hesse's concern? Under our zoning ordinance, section 10.01 talks about the procedure and does specifically best public case of public hearing with the zoning administrator and that has been carried out. And in SDC 1124, employment of planning staff, the commission is authorized to delegate those responsibilities accordingly.
Okay. I believe there was somebody on Zoom.
Yes. Hi, this is Harry Freeman and I felt that people are done speaking who are attending the meeting. I would have a chance to talk. Thank you. This is Harry Freeman and I'm a resident of Clay County, 30814 Frog Creek Road and have been a resident since 1997 and am a very frequent user of the river and of Clay County Park. And I would agree very much with David Struckman Johnson and saying that in many times I visit Clay County Park, I am alone at the park at times. We've spent the night there because the next day we are teaching 156 graders, putting them through different learning stations about the flora and fauna and history of the Missouri River. And those nights are quiet and the only people coming in and out maybe is a patrolman that's coming to cruise the park every four hours or so. I think for many people who visit the park regularly, a, a person that is a consistent, maybe I, I almost consider him the gatekeeper of the Missouri and Clay County Park is Wayne. I'm sure many people have seen him in his truck down at the park and he is an observer. If you want to learn about the wildlife and what happens when nobody's at the park, just talk to Wayne. He, he has a, an extraordinary stories of what happens at Clay County Park when nobody's there. So yeah, I just also wanted to say a few things, I guess, about some of the comments that were brought up about, since we're not landowners adjacent to the proposed subdevelopment, do we have a right to speak? And I would say that we have a strong material, personal and public interest in protecting the this land along the Missouri River. The courts of the United States, including the US Supreme Court, recognize the paramount rights of the public by ruling that navigable lakes and rivers are held by a state in a public trust for the benefit of its citizens. Citizens have a responsibility to protect this public trust from harm. Given that this stretch of river is also a national park, it is owned by all citizens of the United States through their tax dollars. In this way, the people of Clay County who speak on behalf of the river are ambassadors to all US citizens. And the decisions we make here as citizens and as commissioners stretch way beyond the boundaries of Clay County Park in terms of its ramifications. Arguments were also presented by proponents how the subdevelopment will actually beautify the landscape through improvements and have no environmental effects. But at the end of the day, we all know very well that we can't improve upon nature by building houses on it. The purpose of a resource conservation district is to preserve remaining open spaces in their natural state and protect valuable and vulnerable resources. No other parcel in all of Clay County that better deserves this designation. It is adjacent to our only rural park in borders of federal park. It is in a federal flood plain. It has a shallow aquifer. And the riparian zone along its border is essential to preserving the natural state of the river and its flora and fauna. The river cannot speak for itself and therefore we, the people of Clay County and citizens of Clay County in the United States must take this decision very seriously as our role of stewards of this land and speak for the river. The current NRC standing exemplifies good stewardship. Let's make a vote to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thanks. Jerry, did you want to speak?
Yes, please. Excuse me, I'm, I'm not there today because my grandson was nice enough to give me a bad cold over Christmas. So I'm zooming. My name is Jerry Wilson. I live at 30959 Frog Creek Road. I'd like to address some of the statements and claims that have been made by some of the folks backing this proposed zoning change. The agent representing the Olsons and the Heine Trust told us that even though Daniel Heine kept his land in agriculture and preserved the trees along the river, it was his wish that family members be able to build houses on his land. Assuming that is the case, a handful of sites for family members is something entirely different from a large riverfront development that the proponents have in mind. Ms. Taggart claimed that the, quote, this NRC thing was just slapped on and it shouldn't prevent housing development. After all, this is private property, she said, quote, so the public has nothing to do with it. I find those comments remarkable. It is the, the natural resources conservation district is the result of science and of the wise actions of county officials over the past 20 years. And the reasons for the NRC are, are clearly defined and have been enumerated this morning. So we, members of the public who don't own private property on the river, we do have something to do with it. We, the public are all owners and custodians of Clay. We're allowed to enjoy it without the intrusion, the long string of houses and boat docks and lights and noise that will disturb both this wildlife corridor in our peace. And the Missouri River, as has been stated, is part of the national park system, which belongs to all Americans. Two proponents who own private property on the riverfront claim that they have, quote, helped a multitude of people who were experiencing trouble on the river. That too is astonishing. Having canoed and kayak the stretch of river for 44 years, I can say that I've nearly been swamped by speedboats on more than one occasion, but I've never witnessed anybody being rescued. Ms. Mark told us that, quote, we don't have any flooding issues on the river. I expect most of us remember 2011, a short decade ago, when for an entire summer, the river was running at a million gallons per second. Twice the maximum rate the Corps of Engineers predicted would be the all-time future peak. That was the summer that numerous landowners bulldozed semi-loads of broken highway concrete, culvert, rebar and other junk into the river to protect their private property. All this material is strictly prohibited by the Corps of Engineers, which manages the shorelines and it was dumped into the river by, without the required permits. Incidentally, this crudely armored land includes the property we are discussing today. It's sort of grown over with grass and weeds now, but if you walk down the river or float down the river, you can see how it's armored. I assume that the, if this housing development were to occur, that they do a nicer job of it in the future, but we have to recognize that it was illegally armored in 2011. And finally, the public park of Clay County lost a great deal of riverfrontage as a direct result of private citizens, private property being armored above and below Clay County, lying the river to eat away a big strip of our public park. Finally, Mr. Muckler stated that if the zoning change is not allowed, the trees would likely be clear cut anyway. I recall another commissioner responding appropriately to, to that conjecture. So the issue has at hand, has really little to do with Mr. Heine's wishes. And I cannot accept the idea that private property trumps the public interest. The Clay County ordinance governs the use of this land and what you're being asked to do now is to throw out the ordinance's protection of natural resource conservation land for private gain. I urge you to reject that request. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other opponents? Hearing that, I'm going to close the public comment period. Open it to the commissioners. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Then 10 minutes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright. Uh, first of all, I, I had somebody in the room, Jerry, wanted me to just say that I, I don't represent the Olsons. I represent Ms. Taggart. I wanted to first address, there are some things said that, that I was making threats towards the commission. I hope you guys didn't take it as threats. What I was saying was. Uh, there's, there's some facts going on here. One of those facts is this land is, uh, currently used for agriculture, can be. Those trees could be clean, cleared right now by the landowner, whoever's farming the land. They could farm right up next to the river. Uh, the other thing, uh, is, uh, this land, uh, rezoning it to. Rural residential, uh, is consistent with what is right in that area. There are homes directly on the other side of Clay County Park right now. So this would be, uh, the same thing, be consistent with that on the other side. There's also other ways that this can be done. First of all, they can build on it right now. They can put s- certain amount of houses on there. Pursuant to the NRCS classification. They can also apply for CUPs and, uh, based on some of our calculations. I think we can get the, the eighteen lots in there based on that too. Uh, but the problem with that is I think it's a lot dirtier for the commission. I think it's a lot dirtier for the landowner. Uh, it would be much, much cleaner, uh, to just rezone it. Uh, and I think, like I said, it's going to be developed. It's just, it's just, that's the fact. The lots are big lots. They're two acre lots. There's setbacks. Uh, there's already tons of lots on the river. This is not going to change the free flowing course of the river. And, uh, we've been talking about, you know, who owns this land and, and the, uh. The National Park Service, the National Park Service does not own this land. They control the river. They regulate the river. They do not own the land ordering the river, at least not this land. This is private property. Many, many private property owners in this, in this county have been allowed to do these same things. Uh, Mr. Heine, uh, paid taxes for years and years and years, uh, worked his life on this property. Uh, he should have the right and the ability to do what he wants with it. I think any one of us sitting in this room, if it was my land or your land, you would feel the same way. So, uh, with that, uh, I will reserve any of my time for my client if she has anything to say, otherwise I'll leave it at that.
I'll keep this brief. Um, again, the main thing is this is private property. It's private property. We should be allowed to do with it as we would like. As long as it doesn't bother an adjacent private property owner. And the deal is, if this is denied, one of the most desert disturbing results is that my uncle will not even be able to have his trust honored as intended. If i- in the current zoning, which again, this would be a whole different rule than anybody else who's put up a riverlot has had to live by. Um, what's allowed under NRC is three properties per quarter quarter. Well, in his trust, he directed that there be four in that quarter quarter. And additionally, Olson's would be in that quarter quarter. There's five and he's not even allowed to do with. That portion as he, as he had hoped and wished. The other thing is, um. Everybody else has been able to do. Two acres with two hundred feet of front, frontage. A- anybody who's requested, if that's what they wanted, that's what they got. Now here you're saying, no, 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 yours will have to be four acres with about four hundred feet of, well. I don't even know what the matter, probably four hundred feet. They'd have to be at least double, what, what, what we'll let you do is double. You have to have it double, at least double, if not triple, the size of what everybody else was allowed to do. So it's putting in a whole different set of rules for my uncle. Than everybody else had to live by. Again, I get that the river needs to be protected. I understand Clay County Park. We, we want to keep that nice. This land is not Clay County Park and this land is not the river. This is private land by it. Everything you want to do on the river is still going to remain, everything. Anybody who was on that land doing anything prior, they were trespassing. So again, I urge the just and fair result of a yes vote to this rezon request. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll close the public hearing, public comment. Open it to the commissioners.
If I could go first and then last, from last time, I've got a few questions actually. Um, no matter what is decided. This environment and property will change. I mean. If it's passed, it will be a development. If it's not passed, it'll be a somewhat development or farmland. So I'm, I'm not. Knowing what the benefits are. Um, personally, I have a real difficulty of. Moving away from the NRC, but that's the personal. The second is the trees. I've came to this community a year or two ago. And I've lived here, I figured it out, which I rarely like to do for over fifty years. That portion of. And you know, next to Clay County Park was my. Special place to go. Because I grew up in New Hampshire, New England with lots of trees. And when I got very afraid of the openness of South Dakota, I would run to that exact area and sit under the trees. I don't go there anymore because most of those trees have already been taken by the river. I mean, I go to Clay County Park, but my special spot has already been swallowed up by the river. The argument on the trees, I find if we look down the road, no matter what. Ten, twenty years, they are probably gone. The river will take them. So I can't fit that one into my decision. What I do ask is what are the exact benefits either way? With the NRC, it is fewer houses, so there's not the income. But what are the protections that have been? I've heard three or four times that the proposed development will provide greater protections. I have not heard what those protections are. So I, I have a hard time balancing. Someone mentioned something being dirty and I don't remember what it was referring to. I have a big question marked by it, so I can't. Basically, I would like to hear either from the other, from our zoning administrator or from the commission. Balance of, of the benefits of one to the other.
Got a microphone, Drew? Cause, so it, there's, there's subdivision rules if this were passed. So we need to weigh those against, um. Just the allowed three houses per quarter quarter. What's, what's the difference?
Hey, I wish I had more time to research this question so I could phrase it better. On first brush. There would be less protections for the river in terms of setbacks and. Particularly minimum lot size to go to rural residential. However, the applicant in their proposal, in their preliminary flat has said. That the, that their proposed lots will be. Essentially to the same standard as the NRC requirements. So from a setback perspective and the zoning ordinance perspective, there's less protections to go to rural residential. But their proposal brings those. Uh, protections back. Also in their proposal for lots, I believe it was eleven through eighteen, they had sublots. Protecting, uh, yeah, scratch that last part. So essentially their proposal. Has it as about the same. There wouldn't be any big difference, at least in terms of zoning ordinance at first brush.
Yeah, so I, I guess I, uh, I see it differently. Um, based on, uh, the NRC district. Um, you know, I, the NRC district was created by former commissions. Um, you know, for, uh, you know, to, to really protect views. Um, preserve natural settings for wildlife habitat. Um, you know, really to preserve this whole riparian zone. Um, add to the aesthetic quality of the community, prevent the destruction or pollution of natural resources. Um, you know, I, I, the applicant is asking for a change in zone. To allow a higher density development and to string eighteen houses along the river. Um, and right now there is a six mile stretch. Um, of, of riverfront, um, that is either in the NRC zone or. Um, free and clear, uh, because it belongs to the federal government. This will actually interrupt. Um, that, that wildlife, that wildlife corridor will break up six, six mile, that six mile stretch. Um, you know, it's opposed by the National Park Service, uh, changing the zone for some pretty good reasons. Um, you know, I, 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 when we talk about a, a free flowing river. Um, it's, it's, it's more than just a, a concept. It actually changes. Um, the ecology of both the river and the riparian zone. Um, so we are in not only this fifty-nine mile stretch. Of, um, you know, National Park Service river. Um, but we're also in the segment of it, um, that is really unusual and critical. Uh, so for example, because the river flows wildly, uh, and, and freely in this area. Um, there's sediment in the river that allows pallid sturgeon to breed. Uh, that's, that's really, really unusual in the United States. We have a section of the river that is unique. In the entire country. Um, you know, l- looking at, uh, you know, reading through the National Park Service foundational document. For the Missouri National Recreation River. Um, you know, in this, in this particular stretch. Um, it's an ecological value, fish and wildlife, unique, um, geological value, recreational value, scenic value. Um, and cultural value. It's one of the few sections of the river, a handful of sections of the river. That hit all of those values. Um, you know, I, I, I am with the applicants that they should be allowed to use their land to its highest and best use. But the comprehensive plan of development, you know, twenty years ago, determined. That the highest and best use for this land is national resource conservation land. And, you know, the applicants have held this as national resource, um, uh, conservation land for all this time. Uh, and, you know, it's this. Changing the zone does not change their rights. Um, they have all the rights that are in the comprehensive plan and have been for many, many years. What they're asking for is additional rights, so that instead of building nine to twelve homes, they can build eighteen homes. And I understand that that's a great economic benefit for them. I understand that it's in their interest to do that. But I think we as a commission are called to look at the broader interests of the community, of the national park. Um, and, uh, you know, of, 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 of this really precious space that we have. So, so, so I, I, you know, I'm, I, I, I really think when we, you know, Phyllis was asking about the positives and negatives. The positive is that, you know, the applicants would get to build a higher density subdivision. But the negatives are that it changes the nature of the river in a part of the river that is unique. Um, and important, uh, it interrupts a wildlife corridor. Um, and it's opposed by the National Park Service, uh, because it would change the nature of. The national river.
So Drew, the setbacks between rural residential and NRC are the same for the Missouri River. Hundred and twenty-five feet. Yes. From the ordinary high water mark. Just off the top of my head, the only other protection that we would get, be given with a rural residential is. Um, at the end of it, there's got to be a cul-de-sac for turnaround for emergency vehicles.
Yeah, there is ordinary high water map setbacks for rural residential. The cul-de-sac you choose is not part of this.
But it would be if it was rural residential. No?
Not, not where we're at right now.
Rural residential is, uh, no.
Fifty-nine and sixty-three of our county ordinance.
Yeah, rural residential does have the ordinary high water mix, but rural residential does have the, uh, ordinary high water.
Hundred and twenty-five. Yep, in both of them. And then just for clarification, it was brought up, I think Sharon, you brought it up, that they're allowed three per quarter quarter. But I mean, they're allowed, you had mentioned conditional use permit. That would be if they wanted to move more housing, uh, conditional use permit would only come into play if they wanted to move more housing eligibility's. Into that quarter quarter.
First off, I worked for the county back in the early seventies after graduating from high school. And one of the things that's talked about, we hauled concrete down there for Clay County Park to stabilize the bank. So I know that's been done clear back then. You might not be able to see it now, but we hauled concrete down there. I did that probably for two weeks in the summertime. We hauled rock, we hauled concrete, whatever we could get a hold of, just trying to stabilize it. So that point, you know, it's going to be there. I wasn't threatened by, by what you said, because when I look at it. I talked to Drew this morning, under the NRC, they're allowed to put nine houses on there. So there's going to be nine houses, no matter what we do. You can count on that. They can also transfer property. And they could get another nine lots. It makes it a little more tougher for them, but we can put, it's under a conditional use, correct? And so I guess I've been torn between this. Two weeks ago, I would have told you that I would have voted for it. Week ago, I would have told you I would be just the opposite. I walked in here this morning and I didn't know which way I was going. So this has been a very tough situation to, to make an answer. I, I worry about the one thing is the next person that comes in that wants a permit. And we allow them to change, but Sarah pointed out that we've already been doing it. And it's been doing it since this comprehensive plan has been in. We allowed people to go on there. We didn't follow the rules. And so I'm really still torn. And, but, you know. it's private property. I mean, I understand that everybody is here. I I like the river too. I'm not a river person per se. But I used to go up to Minnesota a lot with my father-in-law's old fishing and I liked sitting on the banks, looking at the river. But also I like to drive, we used to take the boat on boat rides around there to see all the new houses that that was there. And I enjoyed looking at them too. And I also see the concrete and whatever they tried to do to stabilize even those on the lakes. So and that didn't, you know, and I think about it now, I never even noticed that. I noticed the houses. You know, and the trees and the stuff they had there. So that's basically all I got to say.
So this property is apparently already rip wrapped?
I think there's some on it, yes. Part of the park is always.
Right.
They're back in the seventies. I don't want to get myself too old. Well, we're both, we're both old enough to do that. I do remember hauling the rocks out there and the stuff. If you had it back at the river, I wasn't too happy about that.
Like when you get right down to it, this is just a zoning issue. What we're doing is that we have we're you guys are asking for establish it establishment of a new zoning district in a particular spot. And as commissioners and I think as as the folks on the planning commission should take as one of the the main considerations is how consistent this particular land use is and will be going on with adjoining land, land uses. Both upstream and downstream, we have essentially beyond natural resource district. Downstream, we have the 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 federal land that is protected for wildlife purposes. Upstream, we have Clay County Park, which is state-owned property that's essentially a nature preserve. If I had my way, as I've mentioned many times before, that if I had my way, it wouldn't be called a park, it'd be called a preserve. Which is more like what I think the best use of that property is. This particular change of use or the present use, if we if we remain with the present use, really, we're not adding or subtracting to property rights at all. Of the folks that that own that property presently, they can continue to use it as they have. They have the the right to put at least nine houses on, double that with some conditional use. On the easternmost quarter of a quarter, I think that there's it would preclude, it it more or less take away Kyle's East pivot. Because they would have to actually, there's room to put three houses over on that too. But to stay out of the floodplain zone, yet those houses would be essentially very near where the center of that pivot is, would erase its use. So really, we're talking about nine houses under present use. Eighteen, perhaps more with some changes or with change to res- rural residential. I don't feel great about having a new residential district in in the country. Myself, in that particular place within the country. De facto, yes, I think we have a rural residential district that's a de facto rural residential district upstream. And it's it's there because of probably misapplication of of zoning zoning law, making a lot of exceptions to the way it's been zoned for years and years and years. I don't know that it's in the community's best interest to change that. Thank you.
Other comments? Yeah, I don't know what to what to say that hasn't already been said. It is a private property rights. Everybody talks about saving the, you know, preserving the river. They're not going to build in the river. It's already bank stabilized on a portion of it, apparently. And that was a big concern that that's going to happen. Well, it's already happened. And then how much of the horizon does the public get to control? Because they're, I mean, they're sitting here stating that when we're on the river or we drive down there, we're going to see houses. And it's going to interrupt our view of what we enjoy. How much of the horizon do they get to control over private property?
You know, I I I think so that we have to keep in mind that their property rights are protected in the current designation, which is NRC. And what they're asking for are additional property rights to build at a higher density. I don't think anybody is arguing, or at least I'm not arguing, that they should not have the right to build. I think they do have the right to build under the current zone. The question is whether they have a right to build at a higher density. And that's an additional right that, you know, it it, you know, really under current zoning. You know, they're they're in an NRC zone. And I, you know, I think they're there for a reason. I think that past commissions and the comprehensive plan have looked at the Missouri National Recreation River, the situation of Clay County Park. The protection of the riparian zone and for all those reasons have designated in our NRC. And so question before us is not a question of building or not building, right? It's not a question of the horizon. It's really a question of do they have additional right? Or are we going to grant them an additional right in addition to the rights they already have? To build at a higher density. And I understand that, you know, that 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 is a a financial, a very valuable financial proposition. But I don't think it's our obligation as a commission to be concerned about individual profit so much as it is our obligation as a commission to be concerned about the community as a whole, following our comprehensive plan. Honoring our zoning, you know, keeping this NRC zone along the river is the only way that we will continue to have a national park, you know, in in our county. You know, once, once we let go of those NRC zones. You know, we are going to wind up with a a river that, you know, is rip wrapped entirely. I know that in the past, the Army Corps has declined to allow rip wrap on some on this this section. And you know, if if there are houses there, it's going to be very difficult to to decline again. So you know, I think it's a very impactful change to change the zoning, to create a new rural residential district where we now have a national resource conservation zone. And I I am very uncomfortable with it.
Drew, can you answer me a question? When those other places up west of the of the park. Were they, and some of them got eight or nine, my correct, eight? Okay, it's eight right there. When they got to permit, I mean, I know you weren't here. Yeah, but did they, were they allowed to have three?
No, that was, most of those west upriver were planted in the sixties, seventies, eighties. Okay. I assume that was long before the NRC. Yeah.
Is that what you guys built up there?
It's been there about twenty four years or so.
Yeah.
Correct.
You built but platted.
Right.
The plaits were all after they built the dam, the river was built in, everybody went down on those accretion lots.
Correct.
It started plating out.
So you're plating out there for eight? Is that what you're telling me? There's eight. Okay. But they weren't actually allowed that many back then. Is that what you're telling me? You don't know? Okay, so that's, okay.
There wasn't much for ordinances back then. Okay.
Yeah, okay. There's eight, eight lots. How many houses are those eight lots?
There's five structures, one of the caverns.
Microphone, please.
There are five that are built upon, three have never been built upon.
Just doesn't mean it can't be.
Correct.
Correct.
That is twenty five years. Probably the same thing.
Okay.
But my dad actually made that application to the commission formally for that particular subdivision or whatever you want to call it.
He he he's the one that said it was my family land there too.
Okay.
So was it actually changed to rural residential or was it approved as, but NRC wasn't available at that point?
I think it was as ag back then.
As a
As ag, I guess, back like it was back then, depending on where you're at, in which county you're in. You could have a minimum lot size of anywhere from one, one acre to twenty acres.
Yeah.
And that's still same across different counties.
Correct, yeah.
Phyllis, you have anything else?
Other than that all being said, in essence, this is setting precedent because other constructions were under previous rulings.
Under previous ordinances.
Right.
That was done under this ordinance.
Yeah.
Where's that?
High lines, just to the east of that road.
Right.
So that was done under this ordinance?
Yeah, but
Some of them were.
That was long before any of us were.
I know, I know.
I know Leo was always, Leo always talked about it.
But how it came about, I have no idea.
Yeah, I I would also like to point out though that, you know, we are not in zoning decisions bound by precedent in the way that that courts are. That every zoning situation is unique. And I think this zoning situation is a unique question. And you know, the law gives the commission a great deal of discretion in these matters to consider. You know, individual situations before us.
So what you're saying, Betty, is if we approve this today and somebody else comes in and says they want the Sarah Taggart job, that we don't have to give it to them?
You know, I I would say that every, yeah, I think every zoning situation is unique. And you know, I think, you know, we you you have to look at the particular zoning situation in front of you to make to make a decision. You have to look at the particular unique facts. And I I hope that's what we can do here today.
So let's say we deny it and we end up in court. What are we basing the denial on? Because it's something we're going to have to.
Yeah, and I I think
Have to write.
Yeah, I I think Dick has stated that really clearly.
Zoning consistent with adjacent properties.
How far is adjacent?
We've got NRCS as it stands right now. Along that and it's adjacent to a public, public park upstream. And game preservation type of property downstream. Those are the two adjacent uses along the bank. Behind it, it's still an NRCS and it's used, used as ag properly under NRCS.
But we're still going to
This would be, this would put it, be putting up a hole or gap within that consistent zoning.
So if we didn't change the zoning, it would be fine then?
Yeah.
So if they come back in for conditional use permits, that's okay then?
They can, they can ask for those, yes. And that's on a case by case basis going ahead.
Correct, but there's no zoning change. No.
Those will be considered and under NRCS, I think, properly.
Does that sound about right?
Certain we need, I mean, if you do nothing, I'm not certain that 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 does necessarily fall under conditional uses because permitted uses under natural resource conservation district include single-family dwelling if the following provisions are met. And so I I mean, I think that that's where we get into those types of things. So I think that that is a permitted use.
The three per quarter quarter.
Correct.
It's the additional ones that are actually conditional use to be moved into that quarter, that forty acres.
Yes. And I would just offer up, you know, when we look at the comprehensive plan, I mean, I think you guys have two competing interests right now that you're weighing. And either one of them is contemplated within the comprehensive plan. The three primary purposes of the comprehensive plan are, one, to address the planning requirements of state law while also providing a sound and logical basis for county growth management strategies. Two, to provide some predictability about the potential land uses and timing of development. So that both public and private sectors can make informed decisions in the area of real estate and capital investments. And three, to provide the planning commission and county commission with the policies for future planning decisions. And the methods and justification to control land use through through the zoning and subdivision ordinance, capital improvements program and other enforcement controls. And that, you know, relates right back to statute, the whole point of zoning is going to be to balance those physical, social, economic and environmental developments. So that's, that's what you're considering right now in a rezone is what of those interests are you looking to?
Wishes? We have to do something.
Move to deny.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Amen.
Yes.
Manning.
No.
Smith.
Yes.
Sure. Oh, whoa. We're moving to deny, yes.
And Mockler.
No. Motion passes.
This has been an extremely hard one.
Agreed.
Yeah, I do.
We're going to take a five minute recess.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Hey Carrie. Or I should do this probably.
Yes.
Have a direct number for Ericson's?
Uh, yes, we can.
To me rather than announce it.
Okay, now we're back in regular session. Andy, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here.
Which one do you want to start with, safety center or patrol car?
Um, it doesn't matter, let's do the patrol car, I guess, since that was tabled from before. Um, if you recall, we had a submitted price from Vermillion Ford. Um, he indicated that he would match the state bid price, which. Um, eliminates the need for a, a bid in the first place. Um, but we weren't sure if it matched the statement price, so I spent some time looking at the, uh, the state contract off the website. Um, and talking to Don Stewart out at, uh. Vermillion Ford and, and they are to the dollar matching the state price. Uh, one reason I hesitated and had to do the math was. The, the state contract has a base cost and then additional features that are additional to that. Uh, that we have to add, uh, to, to match our specs that Stuart looked at. Um, and then the, uh, of course, the Vermillion Ford. The cost was delivered to Vermillion, the closest we could see on the state bid would be delivery to Sioux Falls. And so even at that, uh, it's the same cost, uh, at Sioux Falls as Vermillion, so. So I'd recommend to accept the price from Vermillion Ford because it is to the dollar matching state bid one, uh. In terms of meeting our bid requirements.
I'll move to accept the Vermillion bid for the next patrol car.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes. Uh, the safety center contract.
Hey, so, uh, you have this in your packet, correct?
Correct.
Okay, what this was, was an intent, uh, with the, the notion that the county would have a facilities management supervisor that would. Um, govern custodial and maintenance, including in the safety center. I thought it would be inappropriate for the city to still have their own employee, which we share an employee, they just pay, pay her for the hours, she's on her side. Uh, they order paper towels and toilet paper separately from that side and on my side, but yet. Everybody uses both sides. It, I thought it'd be more appropriate to combine it all. And then just have the city contract with the county for custodial services and, uh, consumable supplies like toilet paper, paper towels. And, um, so we drafted this addendum to the, uh, nineteen eighty-eight use agreement. Um, they covered the use of this building and, um. I met with the police chief, he, he determined that, I think I have a ten thousand dollar price annually in this, obviously we might review that at the end of the year. And find it was, uh, somehow incorrect, but that was based on previous years where what he paid are the custodian. To clean on his side plus his costs for these janitorial supplies, cleansers, paper towels, toilet paper, things like that. Um, remains to be seen, I know that, uh, Carrie had, uh, already removed the custodial. Um, wages from my budget and placed it in under courthouse facilities management budget. Um, the city will pay the county, uh, for those and so. Uh, I'd already spoken to Carrie about how we're gonna manage consumables like paper towels and toilet paper. If the facilities management supervisor buy them all under the county budget. Um, or if it comes out of my budget, but it won't come out of the cities, they'll pay, they'll pay quarterly, twenty-five hundred dollars a quarter. Based on this agreement, so I hope that answers any questions you have. If you have others, let me know. This was presented to the city council last night, they approved it, the mayor will sign it this afternoon and then, uh. Uh, if you approve it, then Travis and I would sign it. And, uh. And then it just, it'll take effect as of last Saturday.
Seems fair enough to me.
And I, I'm sure you've explained it and I, just so I'm reading it right, supplies are still separated between the two.
No, supplies will be together and, you know, so whether it be, um. You know, whoever is hired as facilities management, then they would make sure that the building is stocked with toilet paper, paper towels. You know, cleansers, things like that, and, uh, that would be covered under this contract.
Oh, okay, cause I thought you said they paid, they paid twenty-five hundred dollars quarterly. For everything last year.
They paid, they bought it just when they, when Cindy Carrington is, is the custodian that serves this. Safety center now and has for several, many years. And, um, when she sees supplies are dwindling on, on the police department side, she orders more and that bill goes there. And she sees it dwindling on my side of the building, she orders more and I pay that bill. But, you know, communication staff or city employees use it on my side, you know, people use whatever bathroom they're nearest. And, um, I just thought it'd be more appropriate for all that to come out of the same budget and then the city. Uh, will pay the county twenty-five hundred dollars a quarter or ten thousand a year for those supplies. And that number is based on what the police chief has paid for those supplies over the last several years.
And the assumption is, is probably total costs are somewhere in the twenty K range, so we're splitting it down the middle?
Yes, somewhat, um, the, uh. For the most part, uh, supplies and repairs and things like that is split on the ground floor at two thirds and one third. With the county picking up two thirds and that's based on that nineteen eighty-eight agreement. But it, it should, it should serve the city. Um, they essentially become a customer of the facilities management supervisor in terms of the, um. You know, having their space cleaned and stocked, same as any other office in the courthouse and me at that point. And, um, they should have their needs met to the, you know, and their, their cost for that is ten thousand dollars a year. I don't believe they'll be paying more in this case than they, they have in the past. And I don't think the county would be picking up the slack, I think that it's just a more efficient way of doing it.
So the, the ten thousand, is that just supplies or is that wages also?
Wages and supplies, yeah.
Okay, okay. Do we need a motion?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I guess I know.
I'll make, or did you already make it?
Uh, no, we don't have one yet.
I'll make a motion to approve that, I'll second that. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Only that. In future years, we should just visit what changes are with our expanded personnel. What the costs truly are in the future.
And I think that that is, uh, is mentioned in, uh, I think one of the final paragraphs. And, um, and it kind of drafted it to where it doesn't, uh, it doesn't specify personnel in terms of that there is a certain person. That would be cleaning there other than that, uh, police chief and I would have some authority to conduct a background check over anybody. That is working in our, in our space and that is, that's essentially required by, uh, FBI. So for us, because the criminal justice intelligence information that would be in there, so. Uh, it's kind of deliberately crafted to where it wouldn't relate to a certain person. Or number of people, essentially the facilities management director would be the person that would be obligated to. You know, provide these services via whoever they delegate.
So I, I do have a, I'm gonna call it a problem with this, under compensation. This fee is determined by historical data from past years and may be adjusted by mutual agreement annually.
In my.
We don't mutually agree, we can't amend it.
And I guess then they would probably, uh, if the city thought they wanted to reduce that and the county wouldn't, then essentially it'd be null void. And we'd have a, come up with a new agreement.
Yeah, but I'm wondering if we shouldn't just make this annual. Because if we can't raise it either and it doesn't say, it doesn't give us a way out. I mean, there's no end to the contract. And if we're not mutually agreement. If it's not mutually agreed upon changing, we're stuck with the contract.
And so maybe a, a better way of wording it would be that it would be for a year renewable upon, uh, mutual agreement.
Well, what if we just put an end date of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two? Or actually, I mean, this says January first, we should probably make it like middle of January.
So.
Next year.
I'm reading here. Well, I guess that you could have that, uh, fee is determined by historical data from past years, maybe adjusted by mutual agreement annually, you could say, uh. And will be. You know, I, I don't know.
Yeah, we are adding personnel. Which will. Be servicing their area also in, so.
If we could, if we could just get rid of mutual agreement, I guess.
Yeah, that's fair.
You know, just be adjusted annually.
Yes. Understand.
Maybe, maybe adjusted annually, sorry. Not will be, maybe, cause I'm not concerned about you and Matt getting along.
Yeah.
It's who's next.
Yeah, and that's fair because in, in, uh, you know, after the first year we might, you know. You know, for the example, the county is gonna pick up the, the, all the personnel headaches and costs and come with that. And.
Could be sizable.
Well, and the other thing is gonna be, if, if we were lucky enough to get this jail built, there's gonna be more square footage to be cleaning also.
Well, that, that's gonna require a new agreement. This is an addendum to the nineteen eighty-eight agreement that covers this public safety center. When we, when we build a new agreement, we'll have a new, our new building, we'll have a new joint powers agreement to cover that. But this is only an addendum to that nineteen eighty-eight agreement that governs this particular building.
Okay.
That's a whole other can of worms there. Um.
Well, I can, let's see, I can just strike that, right, the by mutual agreement section?
Yeah, what, what would, the result of that would be, uh, it would have to be presented back to the council again. I'm sure they wouldn't have any problem with that either, but it'll, it'll go back to the next meeting first.
Or do we just print a new one?
So, I mean, if there was a motion for you to sign it with that. Modification, then I would say it would be, I, I, I think it'd be prudent to, um, to print off a new. Clean copy with that modification and then send it back to the city with that.
I agree. Cause there, there's one coming to us this afternoon signed by the city. And that one's not gonna get signed by the county, so what we'll be doing is sending back a, a revised version to the city. So, I can amend that and, uh, and print off a new copy.
Or am I worrying about something that I shouldn't?
No, I think it's a fair, fair statement.
It was my question also, we're adding fifty thousand dollar. Person at a minimum, um, plus the repairs, et cetera, so. I, I don't say that this contract actually takes into consideration those things that we hired outside.
I think it does, the, um, it, it does mention that, uh, plumbing costs, electrical, any, any sort of outside repairs. It'd still be covered as per the nineteen eighty-eight agreement. And we already, we already do that.
They're done inside.
If there's, if there, if we have somebody that, you know, let me find the language here. Facilities management director may perform light maintenance tasks when appropriate, but will seek service of professional contractors, plumbers or electricians when necessary. Payment of cost for such expenses shall be the responsibility of the police department and the sheriff's office, shared pursuant to the current cost sharing and use agreement.
Okay, I missed that.
My, in my mind, uh, that meant the facilities management director might, uh, you know, fix the doorknob or, uh, you know. Tighten some screws or change light bulbs and that's without sending a bill. But if you got a plumber in that that would be, that, that bill would be covered. Uh, under this contract by the city and by the police department and sheriff, I still have a budget for that and so does police department.
Okay.
And the, uh, and, and then the other notion is, and I realize that the facilities management person is gonna oversee all this, but still takes. The same number of hours to clean the police department side of the building as it did before. And, and, you know, the same amount of consumable supplies as it did before, so. Um, I think that the county might, might, uh, you know, need to, need to raise it because of the personnel cost that goes with managing that person. But, um, I think this is a good starting point. And that's just based on, based on past known costs. And so it might need to be reviewed in a year. And so I think that Travis's, uh, concerns are reasonable.
So who, who made the motion?
I did.
You did? So can we just adjust, can we just, we can make the motion with the by mutual agreement or. By mutual agreement struck and reprinted, that way I can still sign it.
So what?
I, what?
So it, it was just, uh, pointed out that contents of an agreement under one twenty-four for any such agreement. So specify the filing and subsection one is its duration and I just wanted to, I was wondering if that. Is something that's contemplated here. As we make that, that amendment or the original agreement and I was just paging back through that has a, has a duration, you know. It renews annually unless notice is otherwise given or something to that effect.
Is this, uh, it has that it's, uh, remain in effect except by amendment or cancellation. Um, probably would need to have some sort of thirty days of notice or something to that effect.
Yeah, what kind of notice do you guys want included in there? My apologies for not catching that sooner.
It's gonna have to be written, written notice.
Written thirty days.
I think that's appropriate.
So is that an amendment to, I didn't see that on here, is that an amendment to something else?
The, the last sentence.
Yeah. Last sentence of the whole addendum.
Okay.
This, and this addendum will remain in effect except by amendment or cancellation of this use agreements itself. Comma, which shall be provided. By either party with thirty days notice to the other, up for their intention to cancel.
Yeah.
Pretty normal language, yep.
The nineteen eighty-eight agreement has survived unaltered since nineteen eighty-eight, so.
Pretty darn good.
The difference, the difference here is that there's, uh, money changing hands in regard to this con, this addendum, so. You know, I think it does, it is reasonable to review it and maybe have an expiration because money's changing hands. There wasn't, that wasn't the case with the use agreement nineteen eighty-eight.
Well, it's money changing hands and we are changing personnel also, so historic. Costs may change in who's doing what in the next year, so I think it's just appropriate that we say. There can be changes.
So Andy, I get, I'm sure you didn't look back, cause this ten thousand, that didn't, how much has that increased for them over the years or do you not know?
Um, it's minimal, I don't believe, he just looked, I think, at the last three years and saw an average. Came to me with that number.
Okay. Well, since we're gonna have to send it back to the city council and we meet next Tuesday, can we just get it rewritten and sent to us for next meeting?
Sure.
For now, yeah.
The, uh, and, and the, essentially we're operating now as if this, this will happen. Um, in that, uh, I've told Cindy to report all of her hours to me. And, and she'll cease to become a city employee as of January first. And so I'll report her hours to Carrie until there's a facilities management supervisor hired. So, you know, I, it's, it's, if we believe that this will, will get there on this, then we'll keep doing it that way.
Okay.
I don't, I don't anticipate that any disagreement with these changes on the city's part, they had no problems with it as it was.
We get a motion to table.
Make a motion to table.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes. Um, combined election agreement. Oh, sorry, Andy, did you have anything else?
Uh, no, I will, uh, I'll amend this to my understanding and, uh, I'll forward it to Carrie and Alexis. For review and make sure that I got the. Got it right.
Sounds good. Thank you. Combined election agreement.
This is an election year, isn't it?
It is. Fortunately, unfortunately, depends that, depends what side of the fence you're on.
Somewhat.
This is the same, exact same, uh, language that we've been using for, I don't know, over twenty years. And, uh, the only thing we did was update the dates for twenty twenty-two, so.
Okay, I move approval.
Okay, I move approval. I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. So let's go to Public Assurance Alliance.
Looks like the same agreement we've always had.
Yeah, they update it periodically. Um, Lexi looked it over and I think she was okay with it.
Yeah, they have, they do outline in there some of those modifications and what they're doing is, and it's out. I mean, the explanation is provided in that cover page. That um, they're not gonna allow people to bop in and bop out of the agreement, and I think that makes sense. Um. I understand why that language is included in there theoretically. I think it's good for all members and I, and I don't know about bopping in and bopping out of the agreement. So I think that this is, um, I didn't have any concerns as I looked things over uh, with those modifications. Cause it was very transparent about what they were changing and why.
Yeah, and it limits the bop back in. Uh, it's got a two-year waiting period before you can get back in, so.
Yeah.
It sort of discourages entities from just frivolous jumping back, back and forth.
Exactly. And then the other, um, the other provisions have to do with board representation and removal. As well as kind of getting with the technology times of the way we all are now, our new reality um. With Zoom meetings. So a- and I think in some respects that contemplates if there were historically issues with a, with. Board members being absent from meetings, this gives what I'm gonna call a little more flexibility to the board to make that determination. For those folks that serve on it and then um, establish a chairman instead of the board as a whole. I mean, all of those things seemed. I didn't have any concerns with any of this. Um. It, I understood why they were making those updates.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes, motion passes.
We're not gonna have any trouble, are we?
I thought it came to give me a good whipping or something.
Drew's dad just showed up.
Yeah. Drew's in trouble.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, he, he knows that he can't just stroll in without a comment from me. We don't, we don't want you to think that we didn't notice that you, your, your uh, presence has been noted.
Two hours ago, you could have snuck in unnoticed.
Yes, yes.
Right now, no.
That's probably up to the zoning director.
Uh, update to the employee appreciation dinner.
Just wanted to let you guys know, we got that scheduled for um, January twenty-eighth, the last, last Friday of the month. It will be at the new Dakota Center, um, attached to Pizza Ranch, their, their banquet hall there. Uh, they're gonna have a really nice variety of food for us, um, desserts. We are able to take the leftovers. And we are able to um, bring dinners to the jailers that are on duty. Um, district meeting I also have scheduled there and that will be March sixteenth. It's our turn to host.
March sixteenth, you said?
Yep. That's a Wednesday, right? I remember my dates correctly. Yeah, March sixteenth.
It's our wedding in for a street, so. Maybe, maybe I'll just.
You'll be in trouble.
Yeah, maybe I just take Sarah to the, to the meeting, you know, as a guest. There you go. Call that good. Gunderson's shaking his head back.
Could've lunched that way.
You might definitely be in trouble then.
She's not on to hear you.
No, she left.
So it can still be a surprise.
Yeah.
Tell her not to watch that.
Okay. Well, unfortunately, since John just showed up, we have to, we're gonna go into executive session. You have to wait for, you have to step out and wait for a little bit. I'll take a motion. For personnel.
I'll make, go ahead.
Moved.
Moved.
Second.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes, we're in executive session.
Okay, give me just a second here to uh, move people to the waiting room. Do we need Andy in?
No.
Sorry, this tracking pad on this computer is not. It's not working well for me here.
Motion to come out.
Motion to come out of executive session.
A motion and a second. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes, we're in regular session. Uh, joint powers agreement. Or person, so not agreement.
Yeah, joint powers, so.
So I would nominate Chris Larson um, as the commission's representative to joint powers.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes, motion passes. Uh, planning and zoning.
I will nominate Cindy.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes, motion passes. Does anybody have anything else?
Well, we're going back in a second.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, if there's nothing else, I was just gonna look on the agenda, just to make sure.
I think we're set.
Lost.
Yeah.
Did we?
It's been a, it's been a, a fun morning.
I wish we could have kept it to the morning.
And beginning to be an even more fun afternoon.
You bet, you bet. But I am getting hungry, by the way.
Just so everybody's aware, it would be eleven o'clock at night right now.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Okay, so I will, well, should I turn the meeting over to Phyllis?
Oh, yeah, I wanna attack the executive session litigation and um. Believe. Travis and Betty would.
I need, we need to hide, make a motion to go into executive.
So.
Litigation.
It's gonna be quick, right?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna step out and I'll get my stuff afterwards, so it's quick. We still like you, John.
I think, I think Carrie, you have to. I do. I, I need the motion first, though.
Okay.
I made the motion. I'll second.
Okay. Any.
Then, um.
Roll call, thank you.
Okay, Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Okay, now I can um, move people to the waiting room.
Sorry, bye-bye, Betty. I'm interested in the painting behind you, by the way.
So I am too. I'd like to know what that painting is behind you.
That's all right, we'll wait till it comes back. That's okay.
I seen that earlier.
Thank you.
The track pad on this computer is very.
Thanks, Drew. Keep your dad around because I may hit him up for lunch. We'll see. Quick, be quick.
Okay.
Move to come out of executive session.
I guess I'll second it.
Okay, and.
Declare us back into regular session.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes, declare us back in regular session. And I will turn it back over to Travis.
Okay, if nobody has anything else, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll go for it.
Not any, we need a second. Okay, uh, roll.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes, meeting adjourned. Thank you. Okay, what's the painting?
Oh, here. A bunch of fish. It's a goldfish. What's the what?
What, what's uh, the sculpture, I think, to the right?
Oh, that's just a lamp.
Okay, okay. Yeah, interesting lamp. Well, I thought that was part of the painting, but obviously I was wrong.
Yeah, yeah, this is my little room. This is my little room in California.
I see. How long are you gonna be in California?
Um, well, at least a few more days. Um, you know, I, I. I'm sort of the only one in town for my mom right now, so uh, when my sister comes back.